Call the meeting to order, City of University Heights, City Council Meeting, Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. The council is all present. And approval of minutes, August 27th, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Public input. Would anyone like to speak to the council tonight? Okay, thank you. So we'll go with Dottie and Streets and Sidewalks. Her report first.
Okay. Um.
You'll have to move her microphone up, maybe.
Okay, the first item is the snow and ice removal that we talked about at the last meeting. And I think there was a consensus at that time that we post the notice on the door, that they are to remove the snow and ice if they haven't done it, and give them 24 hours. Also, tell them in the notice, and I will pass copies here around, or a copy so that you can look at the language, that that is a notice for the entire season. So that should handle the question about, you know, whether, well, we didn't hear again. And if they are rental properties, I think it would be wise to also follow it up with a letter, so that the owner, the property owner, gets notice of the violation. So we don't have arguments about, well, we didn't hear about it.
What do you think of an email? A follow-up with an email? I think Steve mentioned email.
I think that would probably work, as long as everybody's emailed. I mean, you know, whether, I don't know how the arguments, maybe, you know, would...
Steve, can you comment?
The reason I suggested email is because the notice that you're posting, what you're saying is, you've got 24 hours to remove snow, or we're going to do it and bill you for it. The idea of dropping that in the mail doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, I, well, you put it on the door, and then I think you have to follow up with some communication, where they will say, golly, I didn't see that, you know.
So, Dottie, what you're asking for is a process where you split the notice? If you're, if it happens to be an owner-occupied property, the notice is placed on their door because the assumption is they'll be home? And then, the second process is that if it's a, the property is identified as a rental, a copy of that courtesy is sent via electronic means?
Well, I think it's simpler than that. I think we post the notice on every door that has a violation, rental or non-rental.
Right.
Then we follow up to everybody...
Via email.
...who's gotten the notice by email.
Perfect.
By email, or whatever. That, we posted a notice that we want to reaffirm, just so we have our basis covered legally.
Right.
Okay.
Now, Dottie, one of the outstanding questions was, this needs to be in an ordinance, so that no one forgets?
Just, I'm getting there.
Okay.
So I've talked with Steve, and we are going to present an ordinance.
Good.
I think we could keep the ordinance that we have and amend it to explain the new process, or we could engender a new ordinance, whatever, whichever, Steve.
So the ordinance, that's what I sent on Friday.
Yeah.
It's the, it amends the current ordinance, which is 82, and it, you know, does everything you just said. It's got the language of the notice of violation in it. So that's, that's on the agenda tonight, in that form, and you don't have to consider it tonight, but the ordinance is drafted and is ready to go, I think.
Well, I think, you know, if we could move forward, it would be wise, instead of continuing. Anyhow, that is specific that the property owner is responsible, but it doesn't say anything about whether the property owner can pass the costs. And I think, looking at state law and then reaffirming it with Steve, I think we're on shaky ground if we start trying to control the costs and who pays the costs, because the property owner has the last liability. So, at the same time, I think it would be wise if we amend the rental code, as long as we are working on that now, to say that a rental permit may be revoked if they are not compliant. It could be revoked and removed. That should get anybody's attention, I think.
I think that's already the case.
Hmm?
Well, you can't revoke it for one instance, but it would be one of three instances.
And the landlord wouldn't be able to avoid, you know, the required action, because they would face permit revocation.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we hang the flyer on the door, and this is the one that they used in Iowa City. And I'll pass the photocopy of it around, if I can find it here, so that you can see the language. We might want to edit the language a little bit, but I think that's, it's a good idea. Because the property owner needs to understand that this is the notice for the entire season. So in order to avoid, again, all these arguments about, well, we didn't get it, or we didn't know that, we make it clear, and then follow it up with an email. Then the constraints are on all property owners, for safety, it's really safety purposes. And absentee landlords who do not monitor their property will be held responsible. And I think that's the sign, I think that's safe, I think it's fair. And we do have a huge problem, I think we need to really buckle down and solve it very seriously. So, let me pass that around here.
So, Dottie, do you recommend the first consideration of ordinance?
Yes.
241 tonight?
Yes.
And then, work through the wording of the notice in the next few readings?
Yeah, we can work on that language, but yes, I would...
Okay, so, that's a motion by you.
Yes, I'm making a motion.
Okay, motion by Dottie, is there a second? I don't hear a second, so...
Well, we had a problem...
I'm not in favor of making this change personally, because if we have a situation where there's a lot of ice out there, and people are slipping and falling, this just adds 24 hours to our timeline to getting that, getting resolution on that. So, I don't think that's an acceptable safety trade-off.
Well, but the process...
I think it's fine to have a policy that we're going to try to give notice when we can, but I would not want to put that in ordinance.
The problem that we've had has to be dealt with, Virginia, and you pointed it out with the discussion we had with a previous, you know, citizen. And I think you have to step forward and take measures. Otherwise, you're not going to get it done. And this is, I think, a very fair way to approach the problem.
Right. And it's not just about fairness, it's about process that's stable for a really long period of time. And that's what the resident was complaining about. They thought that you were arbitrarily driving quicker and faster to his property, because he was a rental, than you would have, had been a normal, ordinary, owner-occupied person.
I mean, he's wrong, but it's fine that he can think that.
He could still think that, no matter what, and we have had this ordinance forever.
So, I'd rather have a process, I'd rather have a process that's clear, so that people do not feel that in this tiny town, the rules are being arbitrarily applied. And because of that, I'm going to give you the second to open a vote on, on providing written notice.
Yeah, I just think we need to move forward then. I mean, after all, we are the council, we're the city.
But, Dottie, it's beyond that. It's, it's basic process in American legal...
That's what I'm saying. There hasn't been a process.
I mean, I understand Virginia's point, that she wants to rescue every, you know, negligent person who doesn't take care of the property, but that's not the rule. I mean, that's not, you know, that's just not the role of a city council or any government, at least not here in the states.
So, there's a motion for first consideration by Dottie, and there's a second by Sylvia. Further discussion? Okay, Steve, you're doing roll call votes?
Yes. Let's see, Miller?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Yes.
Herbald?
No.
Kazada?
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
3-2, okay, very good.
So, may I? So the language, the language, the ordinance that you just adopted for the first time has notice language in it. So if you want to change that, or if you want to have the ordinance say the language will be approved by further resolution or something, you can do that, but just tell me so I can draft it right. But there is language in the ordinance, and it is, it fairly well mirrors the Iowa City door hanger language that was presented at the last meeting, and that Dottie has here.
I think the more you keep in the ordinance, that's where people are going to look for the rules. They're not going to look for resolutions or public commentary.
You need a rule.
They're going to look at the rule, so I'd say, let's keep it there.
Well, I'd have to say, they haven't looked so far, when they have complained about this, Sylvia, so, I mean, yes, we're going to look at this, but are we going to look at our other processes also?
Yeah.
We should.
Well, Lisa, to your point, enforcement has been sketchy, and that really was part of the problem, is we didn't have a process for enforcement.
And people feel they've been unfairly treated.
Or targeted, right.
Yeah.
So now we have a process, and I'm thankful for the majority for carrying it.
I'm going to pass around the notice of the city, Iowa City uses, so you can take a look at the language. Do you want to start with Virginia?
Okay, did you want to talk about the property owner maintenance of the trees and vegetation?
Yeah.
On sidewalks?
Wherever my notes are here.
This looks fine to me.
My printer died, and so I was handwriting things, which is never good. Well, without my notes, I can tell you what we talked about. The complaints have been, again, many, about the maintenance of the trees and the overhang, the light situation, because of all the vegetation, and the shrubs and the grasses that are growing on the sidewalk through the cracks, or from the lawns, which aren't kept, and it will then crawl over onto the sidewalk, which not only looks bad, but it's also, again, unsafe. And trying to walk down the sidewalk with weeds or grasses hitting you isn't a pleasant thing. So, we met, Lisa and I and Josiah met at Tower Park last week, and we talked about the problem. And there was a lengthy discussion about property owner's responsibility, again, maintenance and enforcement of the tree and the overhang, previous regulations, and the newly emerging issue about the grasses growing and the unkempt nature of the lawns. So, Josiah referred us to all of the ordinances that were addressing these issues, and I think probably can, I know that there, again, will be an enforcement discussion, because, you know, there would be a way to write, again, an ordinance that would address these problems with penalties. And I really believe, if you don't enforce them, you don't have any, you don't have any leg to stand on, and people will feel that they're not being treated fairly, or that will be targeted. So, Josiah, you want to continue?
Yeah, so I touched on this in my written report, everybody can have it for reference, but, so, I would say, I'd build it down to like, three general questions. One is like, tree trimming, and what are the heights, and what is the protocol, and how is it supposed to go? What about grass and hedges and stuff growing up to the side of the walks? And then we also touched on that intersection corner. There's a specific ordinance about intersection corners and site distance, so I've referenced them in there. Since we talked, I know that, I think Lisa had talked to Virginia, and one of the issues was, who is going to, what's the protocol for somebody to go and make an observation and say, hey, your tree is not meeting the requirements, or it's getting into the sidewalk and needs to be trimmed back?
This is a letter that we previously dropped.
Yeah, and I attached that as well.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And that's a good letter. It basically touches on the ordinances that I had referenced and the various aspects. And in the ordinance, the method laid out for how that's supposed to go is the city council, or the tree board, is how it's written, can, can make those observations and make those notices to people. And it looks like even as late as last year, this is the form that was used, and it was the tree board. I don't know if it was an individual or a group, but the tree board was the one who undertook that, which is consistent with your ordinance, and passed those out, so. I think, I think if you're looking for a process, that is pretty well laid out.
In, in the past, we, it's been mostly volunteers with, and I, Pat Yegi texted me too, and said that, you know, she'd be available, and would probably be able to get a number of volunteers to help.
Well, that sounds like a good option, can we just get that done?
And you're suggesting starting that immediately, correct?
Yeah, because it's...
It's September 10th.
Now's the time with everything growing.
Yeah, this is really simple, somebody just has to do it. Thanks, Pat, if you're willing to do it.
It's September, you know, it's September, you do this in July, so it gets done before school starts.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Right. Because, you know, at the end of the day, we all get calls from residents. I got a call over the summer, and I didn't know who to turn to, because, again, we don't have a process.
Okay, so...
So I turned to Josiah, and I, I don't know how complicated and how much of a scientific background do I need to figure out clearances? I want to make sure that that rule is applied correctly, so I, I think we need to worry about training, and if you can get a good squad of volunteers to do it, certainly, but I just want to let...
Or the tree board, if they wanted to do it.
Can we authorize Pat to recruit a volunteer or two to help her and have her go ahead and get it done? Please make a motion.
The main issue with the process was that I walked down this street, opened my umbrella up, and it would touch your branches, you're going to get a notice to treat you.
Yep, we have a measuring stick, I'll make sure it gets to you.
Scientific measuring.
No, but we actually do have a legit measuring stick.
Yeah, I know.
What kind of compliance did you have? Were they, was it pretty good?
It was great. It was fine. You just have to give people a letter. It's really simple, you just have to do it.
So my, my question has been about the weeds growing across, and the weeds growing in the cracks, and you referred to ordinance 105, and I was wondering, is, is that really applicable, or do we need something else?
Iowa City has notices, which I'll pass around, so that you can see those also. We can handle it much in the manner of, of the snow and ice.
So, Dottie, will you take charge of, of doing that with the tree board and Pat, or whoever volunteers?
I'm going to be talking with Pat.
Okay.
And we'll come back to council. I don't know how successful it would be to get the volunteers.
In public ways.
And you've done it in the past, but, you know, have you had others besides Virginia help you?
Yeah, we've had David Geezy, Dan Stents has helped us, Mark Sheridan has now moved.
People from the tree board.
I mean, it's not hard to find people. I think you can find somebody, right?
But then, it's the notice, it's not the measuring so much, it's how you're going to, you know...
Yeah, so, I would say, let's get a stack of these updated with current dates, and you can print out a stack of them at CopyWorks and just take them with you as you go, put them right on the door, rather than...
So, you, but what about non-residents? Are you going to notify them, or you're just going to leave it at the door?
We've always just left it on the door.
See, I, the way I started this, I did a mail merge with them, and you could mail it to them, or leave it at the door?
Every time I've done it, which is like, four or five years in a row, we've just left it at the door.
And what about landlords and tenants?
They take care of it. Leave it at the door.
Will you follow up, or?
I never have, never had to.
And didn't have any complaints after?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to be sure we have a fair process in that...
Well, will you organize that?
That's fine, but somebody has to actually do the work here.
Well, I think we need to make the ordinance very, very clear.
No, we don't need to change ordinances, someone has to do the work.
Uh-huh, but you have to enforce it, Virginia. You can have pie in the sky, and if you don't enforce it, you, you have nothing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we need to follow up with...
Orness is fine, just go out and do the work.
After the, after that, when there is non-compliance, and there are human beings who will fail to comply, or landlords who just blow it off, there has to be a follow-up, a process.
Well, I think the follow-up before was handled, if there were any complaints, then it was looked at.
Yeah, well, I think if we're going to be fair and...
But if you want to, you organize the follow-up too.
Hit everybody, then we need to be fair.
Okay.
So if you just keep track of where you leave the notices, then somebody can drive around and look and see if it's been taken care of? Yes or no? Huh? You're shaking your head.
We never really needed to follow up, but if there was a complaint that, I mean, people really were pretty worried about getting the notice. Because it says in 25 days, you're going to come and do it, but you don't.
And are we going to do that?
I mean, I, I drive around and take a look, but like, I'm not going to walk the whole thing, but I never, everybody did it.
Mostly, but you're pretty...
Just because they...
I'd suggest at least, maybe you ought to just keep in a list of the addresses, that way, there's some documentation.
Yeah, some record that we asked that this be done.
Okay, Dottie, you'll...
So we need the rentals list too, then?
Why?
Yeah, we'll get that.
Because they'll have to get notice, and somehow, if they, if the tenant doesn't cut the trees, and I can't imagine a lot of tenants would.
Well, they've done it.
They have a letter saying they have to, they did, I mean...
Put on the notice, pass this on to your landlord, if you're not going to do it, because we're coming back.
Okay, so you'll begin that process?
I will be firm, you know, in what I believe.
And get a list.
Can be enforced.
Okay. Very good.
The only thing I'd add on that, so I sent that attachment, that checklist, and then I sent this other one, this document that we had issued in the past, so, I mean, if there's a spot for that on the website.
It's on the website. It doesn't, it doesn't quite look like that. I like yours better, so I was going to take that.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's the same thing, but it's kind of smaller, so I was going to take yours and put it on there, yeah.
Paul, you wanted to say something?
Somewhat related to what you're talking here, about weeds in the sidewalk and on the sidewalk. And I heard from Scott Christensen, he wondered why University Heights doesn't mow the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street at the flower bed? And I said, I don't know who does the mowing for University Heights, and I don't know if they've ever been instructed to do that, but you notice the weeds are growing over, and Scott does a beautiful job of manicuring around the flower bed, but he doesn't feel as good as to mow that.
Well, I...
I'm being a messenger here, but I, I don't know if somebody donated or kind of mowing, or what, or who does the mowing, at Triangle Park.
Well, the person who edged Triangle Park is sitting back there. Pat Yegi went down there with her...
On the other day, the triangle.
The triangle.
Please stop.
No, I know, but Triangle Park, you went down there and edged that, so, yeah, we had a volunteer do that part.
Paul, we have a resident doing the mowing at Triangle Park, and I'm pretty sure they're supposed to be doing around the flower bed too, so if that's not getting done, I'll follow up with them.
Well, I know Scott does the flower bed with the weed here, because I see him there about every three days.
Okay.
But he mentioned to me, why doesn't University Heights do that four-foot strip, which...
Yeah.
To me, not that big of a deal, if somebody knows it's supposed to be done, but I think he's just letting the weeds grow across the entrance ramp. I'm just being a messenger.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
So there were several other places that were supposed to be mowed too, right?
So you're going to follow up with that, Virginia, right?
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints, but...
So, Virginia, you'll follow up with that.
Sure.
Thank you. And so, Dottie, we'll go to Josiah's report now, okay?
A couple of follow-up items from last month. The Swisher Track item, so I did meet with Virginia, and we got all those trees that were overgrowing Prospect and North Sunset into her, her package of tree removal and brush clearing. And then Russ Boyer did go down and place additional rock at the end of North Sunset, when that water runs off. Pavement markings note, that was approved at the last meeting, and their plan to do that, that would be night work on Melrose, that's the only time they get it done, they're going to try and get it done this week, it's weather, weather permitting, obviously, you can't do it when it's wet. I touched base on the tree clearing and the shrub trimming. First item, there's a lot of work in the right-of-way items going on, several of them are pending establishment of grass, and whether or not that's going to happen. We did have, speaking of that site triangle, we had that site triangle issue at Highland and Sunset, and working with that new, I was actually a new owner when that came up. She's been taking care of that and working on transplant and a bunch of that stuff, so it looks, looks much better.
Thank you for, for doing the assessment there.
Yeah. And then we've got a couple items on Golf View coming up, sump pump, recall, we had a sump pump after that kept icing over on Golf View, so that's going to get tied in, which is good, and a couple driveway and sidewalks on Highland coming up. So that's the report, I think I'm up again later.
Any questions for Josiah?
Are you up later for the Iowa DOT report? Let's bring it up now, so we can wrap up Josiah.
Okay, good idea. So that's under finance.
Right. So it's a consideration of Resolution 19-40, approving the adoption of Iowa, Iowa DOT Annual Street Finance Report for this current fiscal year. That was prepared using information from the current budget and some carryover from last year. This was prepared by Steve Kuhl, he is in Georgia. But otherwise, no surprises, it's just a matter of expenditures and income that's coming in for, for these projects. So I'd ask for a second to make an adoption for Resolution 19-40. Do you have any comments to make, Josiah, about it?
Second?
The only comment I'd make is, it kind of goes year to year when we have large projects, because you have to be over a certain higher threshold for those projects to show up in the report, which is usually every other year, and will definitely be the case next year.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, and second by Virginia, for consideration of Resolution 19-40. This has to be filed by September 30th. And Steve, is there any further discussion? He'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, let's see, Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kazada?
Aye.
Sorry, Herbald?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And who files that?
Steve Kuhl.
Steve does.
Okay, fine.
And he'll be back on the 23rd, 24th, so he can do it. And, okay, so now we'll go to Mayor's... to mayor's report, and I don't think Greg or Jim are here yet, or if they're coming, I'm not sure, but I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about first. The December council meeting, December 10th isn't a good day for a few of us, the regular second Tuesday of December, and could council look at December 17th for the regular council meeting, which would be a week later?
That should be fine.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Does that work for you?
I didn't bring my cellphone.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll look at that date again in, at the October 8th meeting, but mark that date on your calendars now.
Okay, I like that, good point.
And then, I just got an email late tonight that I wanted to read, that's pretty exciting, it's an immediate release from the marketing coordinator of Newman-Munson Architects, and it reads, "One university place designed by Newman-Munson Architects has achieved LEED certification from the United States Green Building Council. The LEED rating system is the foremost program for buildings, homes, and communities that are designed, constructed, maintained, and tolerated, operated, not tolerated, operated for improved environmental and human health performance." And then it goes on to say, "The new development is located at the former site of St. Andrews in University Heights. The site includes a mixed-use building situated to the south, fronting Melrose Avenue, and a residential building set behind to the north. The two buildings combined include a total of 101 luxury residential condominiums. University Heights City Hall, Maggie's Wood Fired Pizza, and others, and we might add Sidekick Coffee occupy commercial space on the ground level of the south building. Both buildings include state-of-the-art amenities, underground parking, and concierge services." And I'll add, "Overall, the buildings are 30% more energy efficient than a code baseline building. Newman-Munson Architects have designed over 20 LEED-certified projects in Iowa and additional projects pending certification." So, that's really good news that they just received today. And so, then the next agenda item is discussion of proposed Finkbine development and jurisdictional issues. And Virginia and Nick had heard about the project, but they hadn't heard from Steve on some of the jurisdictional issues and options. And I asked Steve if he'd present that again tonight, just as a starting place of maybe what we could talk about a little bit.
Sure.
Can I, I don't know how to handle this, this comment, Steve, so I think there was an assumption that, that led to your third commentary in terms of options for the city, and I think we need to be super clear with the facts, because the development team clearly is not owning the land, the university retains the land, but the builders, who would be subject to zoning, ADA, and a whole number of other regulatory schemes, are the developers, not the university. And I think you made a comment that assumed that the, that the status of the underlying leasehold for the land applied to the developer, which is something that I think needs to be clarified.
So, the proposal, so I've got up on the, on the screen here, if I can get it.
So, I just want to make sure, can you address that well, if you're going to make an option three presentation on this?
I'm not really sure I follow you, but let me give it a try and I'll see if I can. So, this, so we've got Melrose here on the south, the, this is Burke Dale, okay, just to get ourselves oriented. And the proposal by the university and a development group it's working with is to locate what are shown as like four active adult, you know, senior housing, I don't know what the right word is, nobody seems to want to call it senior housing, but I think that's what it is.
Active adults.
Active adults, thank you. Four buildings which would have, you know, something like 120 units, I think they said?
Yes.
And then a common building that would have, you know, shared amenities, a pool, other, other shared amenities. And then, these are, are shown as townhomes, okay, so it's, looks like there's about five of them here, so this is really close to Burke Dale. And the townhome portion of this proposal extends on to the west, off the depiction here, this was provided by the Build to Suit Group, which is working with the university. So, let me just speak about that first, it's not in University Heights, but I want to talk about it. The, there's a series of, of townhomes that are in Iowa City, just on Melrose that are proposed, and those would be sold to individual owners, just like a home in University Heights or anywhere else would be sold to an individual owner. The owner would own the home and would own the dirt under the home, it would, you know, they might do it as a condo, but you're actually going to own whatever is there, not just be a tenant, okay, so to speak. And I point that out, I think this gets to Sylvia's point, here, the, the, the land that is shown in this, in this depiction, the land where the athletic club has been for years, where the university club has been more recently, is and is proposed to be, continue to be owned by the University of Iowa, okay? The university would enter into a long-term lease, but the university would not give up ownership of the land. So, the proposal is then to develop these active adult buildings and also these townhomes, and then, everything's pretty preliminary, but the way I understood it, they would then tie all the, all those residents into a, probably a condominium regime, as it's known in the law, so that, you know, the people that lived in the townhomes could co-use the pool and stuff like that, probably have common assessments for shared, shared maintenance and things. The developer desires, and the university, in conjunction with the developer, desires to reach some kind of an agreement so that, that approval or consideration, I guess is a better word, of this, of this proposal can be done with one city and not two cities. And, and the reason that, that's before us tonight and, and is being talked about is because of this line. So, if you can see these five buildings, or four buildings plus the common one, I guess that makes it five, this line is the city limits line, okay? It goes right between, or right through this building and comes up here, you know, this is right where the old tennis courts were, okay? Then it comes over here and it, it goes right through this building or in between these two buildings. So, the developer and the university would like not to have to come to the city of University Heights and say, "Could we have approval to develop this part of, of this project?" And then go to the city of Iowa City and say, "Now, this little part of the building is in your city and so is this whole building and part of this, so we'd like to, you know, have your approval too." You know, zoning, you know, planned unit features, the kinds of things that the council has, has gone through with, with the hotel development, with OUP, with others historically, and the kind of considerations that the city of Iowa City and, and other communities, again, University Heights included, goes through routinely when somebody wants to develop something. The developer and the university is saying, "Could we do this once, not twice", okay? And that's, that's difficult, because the corporate boundary goes right in between the buildings. The folks last night with the university and with the, with the development team made a couple of points about why, why this, these buildings are configured the way they are and something of an S shape, and why they, if they don't have to be, I don't know, but, but why they can't just be changed or moved, okay? The first one is, is, I guess fairly intuitive. So, here's Melrose Avenue, and if you come north off of Melrose, you've got the driving range over here, okay? Come north off of Melrose, there is the, the Finkbine commuter drive, all right? So, there's an existing, you know, for lack of a better way of saying it, real street, and they, they'd like not to rip that up and, and, you know, move everything over and just build the street again. So, you can see that the, that the, this, the line, the design line of the buildings sort of, you know, conforms with the eastern edge of that road. So, that's one reason, that they can't just kind of move it one direction or another if they wanted. The other reason is, and I can't tell you where this is on this map, but somewhere roughly west of the proposed buildings and west of the, the street, there's a significant, city of Iowa City water main, I think somebody last night said it was 24 inches, and they really, really don't want to get into anything that would require them to relocate that, all right? So, again, that, that's why they came up with this preliminary design that straddles the city limits line between University Heights and Iowa City in two locations. So, one idea, one, one proposal, and, and as I said last night, there, there could be a lot of different ways of looking at this or, or maybe accommodating it, but three, I guess, come, come to mind. One is to shift the city limits line so that it, shift it to the east, so that instead of being where it is here, okay, it would be instead over here on the ownership line of the university property, so it would be right up against, right up against the Oak Day, or, excuse me, the Burke Dale development, and it would come, it kind of takes a jog over here. Anyway, so if the city limits line was placed there, then, you know, Burke Dale, OUP, everything remains in the city of University Heights, except that university and former university athletic club property, so that this entire development would be in the city of Iowa City, okay? That proposal then would, would, it's, again, very preliminary, but it would go along these lines, then the city of Iowa City would undertake its design review, its zoning review and approval process, and, you know, be responsible for all of the kinds of things that, again, this, the city of University Heights went through with approving this project, OUP, or the hotel project. Iowa City would do all of that, Iowa City would be responsible for ongoing services for the, the residents who lived in this development, fire and police and, and, you know, everything else, you know, public transportation, everything. And then, in exchange for the shift of the corporate boundary line, the city of Iowa City and the city of University Heights would enter into some kind of a 2080 agreement that would provide for revenue sharing. And, and again, I keep repeating myself, but the details are very, very preliminary, or the, the idea is preliminary, there really aren't any details, but the, but the general idea would be to try to say, all right, if, if, if the property is built and, and this portion of it would otherwise have been in the city of University Heights, and would otherwise have been paying taxes to the city of University Heights, well then, the city of Iowa City would remit a revenue-sharing check, probably annually or semi-annually, to the city of University Heights. I don't know if it would be in every bit the amount that the tax would, would have generated, but it's, that's generally the idea. Shift the boundary this way, we'll still pay you for the revenue that the city would have received had, had you not shifted the boundary. That's one idea. The second idea is sort of the other side of the coin, which is, all right, if we don't shift the, the corporate boundary, the city limits line to the east and have the entire project in Iowa City, how about if we shift it to the west? And, and again, it's not been drawn out by anybody, here it's sort of easy to depict, you wouldn't have to do it here, but it's, you'd think you probably would, because that's, there's a line for the university property, and you, you know, that would probably be the one you'd pick to shift it east if you were going to. Again, you could pick a different one. To the west, there isn't any, you know, line, like a, like a lot line, which is what these are, but there is a line along the road, and may, maybe it would, maybe it would be on one side or the other of that line, maybe it would be on the east side so that the roads in Iowa City, and they can maintain it, I don't know. But if you, but if you shifted that, if you, if you shifted the corporate boundary, the city limits line to the west, then this whole development would be in University Heights. And then, everything I said about Iowa City undertaking review and approval process and so forth of the proposal would fall upon University Heights, we would do all of that. Everything I said about Iowa City providing ongoing services to residents, fire and police and public infrastructure and so forth, would fall upon University Heights. All of the tax money would be paid to University Heights, and there would be some sort of revenue-sharing agreement by which University Heights would pay over to, to Iowa City, the portion that otherwise would have been received by Iowa City pursuant to some kind of a 2080 agreement. So, those are the two primary proposals that have been discussed about coming up with a way, fashioning some way that the university and the development team can go forward to present a proposal to one city for consideration as opposed to two cities, okay? I don't, so the, the, the third option that I identified last night was, you could do nothing, you know, you, you could say, "No, we're, we're good, we want the city limits line here, and if you want to come to the city of University Heights and say, 'Well, we have a project that's in your city for sure, it's also in Iowa City, but apparently the part that's in your city is the part we need to talk to you about.'" I mean, you could say to them, "No, we want you to go to two cities." I, I don't know what their reaction would be, I mean, they either could say, "Yes, we're going to try to build it the way it's depicted up here," in which case they certainly would have to go to two cities, or they could say, "No, we're going to do something different and maybe try to contain it in, in one city or the other, or put two buildings totally in one city and three totally not," I, I don't know, there could be options, okay? So, those are the, those are sort of the considerations. The, the, one of the points that I made last night is that regardless of, of the city limits line, all right, so the city limits line is just what it is, or is this part of the earth in Iowa City or is it in University Heights? Regardless of where it is, the, the university's communication, their intention is that, that the university will continue to own this land. The university would enter into a long-term, probably a 40-year land lease for a developer to put up this, the development that's shown, okay? But the university would own the land, and it's important to know that for a couple of reasons. Taxation of university property, because the university is the state, then typically municipalities can't tax state institutions, you know, you walk around downtown in Iowa City and look at Van Allen Hall or McBride Hall or Papa John Business School, you know, the university, the city of Iowa City gets just exactly zero in terms of taxation for many of those buildings and many, many others, okay? And so, this is a hybrid use. The university says, "Well, we own the land, you know, we're the state, you can't tax us." Well, it's pretty clear if the university, the state puts up a, a non-university-type use, then maybe there can be some taxation. There's dispute or there's, there's discussion about that among assessors from time to time, and they're here, in this situation, there is some precedent, at least in Iowa City, not in University Heights. But in the, out on Mormon Trek, sorted on by the softball field, what, I think they call it graduate student housing, we always used to call it married student housing, but anyway, there's, there's a fairly new apartment building, and, you know, if you drive by, I can't remember what it's called.
Aspire at West Campus.
Thank you, Aspire West Campus, you know, to, to, to the naked eye, it might look like it's just some company that put up an apartment building, and it is, but that land is owned by the University of Iowa, and it's subject to a long-term land lease. And so, the way the taxation works there, the land itself, so, so assessors in the state of Iowa are required to assess both land and buildings, and they're required to assess them separately. If you ever look at your tax assessment, it'll say, "Here's how much the land is, or here's how much the building is." If you go to sell your property, the person buying it doesn't probably care much what he or she's paying for the land or the building, in most cases, if, if it's a home, they just want the whole thing, okay? But from an assessment standpoint, land and buildings are assessed separately. So, with the assessment at the Aspire West Campus property, the land owned by the university is, it's probably assessed, but it is not taxed, okay, because it's university property like Van Allen or, or Papa John or whatever it might be, all right? But the building is taxed, right, and so that's what would be proposed for this development, because the university would continue to own the land, it would not be taxed, but the buildings would be taxed. Because the university would continue to own the land, their wealth, I mean, you know, nothing lasts forever, these buildings get- nothing lasts forever. These buildings get put up, at some point, maybe the buildings get torn down. The university would still own the land. So the university would not necessarily be subject to city zoning and other regulations with regard to what it could do with the land. Okay? It would be, in this application, what's presented now, we want to build these active adult and townhomes, that's going to go through city zoning.
Right. And the reason-
But if there comes a point where those buildings aren't going to be here anymore, and the university wants to say, well, we think we're going to put up our new dormitory, or our football stadium, or whatever it might be, cities, a city won't have much to say about that. And my point is that that will be true, that meaning the city won't have much to say about it, whether that property is in University Heights, or it's in the City of Iowa City.
Good.
And in my mind, that is important for the council to keep in mind, because it makes it different than if just a private individual owned this land. And you thought, well, maybe the development looks okay, and I see what you mean about it being a big hassle and headache to go to two city councils and everything, but this development's not going to be here forever. And what about later? And what about our comprehensive plan? And maybe we want that area of our town to develop a certain way or not. And if we move that line today, we're never going to have anything to say about it from a zoning standpoint. And all I, my point there is just to say, with the university and the state of Iowa owning that land, what a city, University Heights or Iowa City, is going to have to say about future use of that land is, in all likelihood, or at least could be, very much restricted.
Right now, but the project before us is partially restricted because it involves a private developer. I think that's fair to say.
I don't know.
And that's what I meant.
It'll go through zoning, like I said.
Yeah. Because of the private-
It's the future.
Right. It's the future. But that's, that's true whether there's a private developer involved now or later, or, I mean, not involved now or later. So I don't think it changes much. I was very concerned about the assumption that even with the private developer, that zoning didn't apply. And I think that needed to be clarified, and I think you did a nice job tonight.
Yeah, no, there wasn't any suggestion that way. If that was the case, I don't think they'd be talking to anybody. They'd just go do it. They understand, the developer and the university understands they need zoning and regulatory approval.
And they also mentioned that they wanted to be good neighbors. So that's why they were here last night. So-
Absolutely. Yeah. So those are the principal, so the principal options for both city councils, both cities. You want to move the line this way, and you guys take care of all this stuff? You want to move the line the other way, and we'll take care of all this stuff?
I have a fourth-
You want to keep it where it is?
I have a fourth suggestion for you, Steve, and I'd like to just throw it out there for discussion, because the fourth suggestion is really keep the boundaries where they are, but have a memorandum of understanding that maybe Iowa City with its more professional staff of everything can handle all of the, all of the related ancillary services and ancillary preliminary development inspections, et cetera. So has that come up in conversation? Because we are moving a historical 1935 boundary.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's the, that's the idea, or the proposal. That has been discussed. I think that the Iowa City legal staff and I agree that, I don't know that the, like, either city can sort of cede or assign its regulatory authority, you know? I don't think that the City of University Heights can say, we're just going to, we're going to adopt zoning that's, whatever you guys decide after you go through your process, because you have professional staff, and kind of, we trust you, or maybe you could even put somebody, if not as a voting member on your board from University Heights, at least they could, it's a public meeting anyway, but at least they could have a special voice. But whatever is decided, we will abide that. We'll agree with that. I mean, I think the city could say that, City of University Heights, in my example. But I don't think there's any way to really enforce that.
Memorandum of understanding is what I'm thinking, and that would be comparable to a 2080 agreement.
Right. But I don't think you can, I don't think you can sort of, as I said, cede or assign away your jurisdictional zoning authority pursuant to a 2080 agreement, or a memorandum of understanding.
Iowa City was about to slap our Mahaska residents with snow violations on the sidewalk that is on Iowa City boundaries. They were ready to go. And that council, and I was part of it, sent you, as a liaison, to tell them, we're going to push you and push back because we think you're out of order. And I'm just thinking, borrowing from that general principle of-
I don't see what that, how that applies.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of a memorandum of understanding should be explored. I mean, I-
Yeah, I just don't think we can do it that way. I mean, it's been discussed, I'm not saying we can't talk about it. I just, I don't think that either city, or both cities, can say, we're going to create a joint zoning body to take up this issue.
Well, I'm not saying joint either.
Well, or that will abide by yours. Yeah.
Yeah. And it would just be restricted to that parcel, which is very discreet. We know where the boundaries are.
Yeah. Yeah. And if the council would like that to be explored further, I'm happy to try to do that. It has been discussed, to answer your question, and the answer that came back from both legal staffs was, I don't think we can do it that way.
Let me make sure I understand something. If we move the boundary and put the project in Iowa City, we are responsible for 0% of the ongoing maintenance and services to that project, but we get 100% of the money for this project only, correct? That's what you're saying? And if this project gets torn down in 25 years, then we're out of the game?
So the first part of what you said is definitely true. If we move it, so the project's all in Iowa City, then, then the City of University Heights won't have any responsibilities. The second part about we'd get 100% of the money, what percent of what money is just going to be a point of discussion?
Okay.
But the notion of what about ongoing? What about after the reasonable life of this proposal?
What happens to that land next?
You know, I think you're moving the boundary permanently.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The permanent, that's why I asked if we can do an MOU, where we say, for this amount of University Heights property-
Well, I think we found that that's not a thing we can do, but it, anyway, let's take a look again at our three choices.
That's, yeah.
So-
Paul wants to comment. Can you stand up, Paul, so that people can hear you? I don't know. Thank you.
I want to back up a little bit. This corner used to be a farm owned by Stevens. And Charlie Brogla had a house where the Athletic Club was. Okay, Berger and Klein and a bunch of investors built the Athletic Club. That was rezoned commercial for that. It's been that way all along, and I don't know how many times it's changed hands. But when we had the bad floods, well, the university didn't have the Memorial Union, so they bought up the Athletic Club. My first question is, it's my understanding, the university facilities management, or some title like that, owns that property. Is that correct? Or is there a diff, it's not specific? And by that arrangement, they were supposed to be paying taxes to University Heights for commercial property. And I don't know if they're doing that or not, but it's a source of income. And this is my first question. What happens if they're just going to be, number one, the ownership of the property, I know that's what they want, but like Steve says, after 40 years or so, it'll be gone, never come back to University Heights. And we're here to protect University Heights.
That's right.
A couple of years ago, when Jim Lane reported on this, and they were talking about offering part of that area for somebody to put a hotel there, and now we got this rambling snake going through the whole mess, it looks like they're trying to make it more difficult than work within the bounds of what they had. And so that's my feeling. I don't know what all the options are, and I'm not sure I heard everything tonight. But I think it's very important that University Heights plants their feet on this sacred ground.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I agree with Paul because buildings have a life cycle. And once that boundary is gone, we're never going to get it back.
No. And I don't trust that decision-making.
So the answer to the taxation questions and the ownership question, the University of Iowa Facilities Corporation had been the owner of that property since, I think, that flood year, 2008, and paid taxes. And I think that the last taxed assessed value was, I think the taxes are like $90,000 a year, something like that.
Yeah. Was it assessed for property and building, or just one or the other?
Yeah, no, both. And the combined assessment was roughly-
Right.
$3.1 million.
And it was always my understanding that the reason it happened to the land plus the building is because it's an affiliate of the university. It's not directly owned by the university. And that changes the taxation analysis of the situation, which, in my mind, also changes the reason why we could entertain maybe an MOU. Why do we have to settle for one or two or three? Let's go to four, and if not five, in terms of options.
The law does have some limitations, I think, is part of the answer.
Well, I don't hear-
But the, so the Facilities Corporation has owned that property. They paid $5.8 million for it. It's assessed at $3.1 million. And they paid taxes on it. In October of last year, the Facilities Corporation conveyed ownership of that to the Board of Regents. So the state of Iowa sort of directly owns that property. And as of January 1, looking at the assessor's card, the assessed value is shown, again, at $3.1 million, but it's all shown as exempt. So I think that's the assessor's way of saying that until something further happens on this property, there may not be any taxation, any tax revenue derived from that property.
That's interesting. I didn't know that.
And actually, they paid 5.8, and its value is 3.1, but they paid for everything inside the building.
Yeah.
The tables, the, you know, I'm just saying, there was an amount that they said was this. And then, I mean, it's just a technical thing.
Sure. Well, and I think as the university representative said last night at the meeting, I don't think there's any doubt that the proximity, I mean, you know, giving access from the rest of Finkbine right onto Melrose was a big consideration for the university. So, you know, there's a couple of other observations that I would make and encourage you to think about. It's interesting to me. You know, there might be as many as 200 to 250 people who would occupy this portion of the development that would be in University Heights if we moved, if we moved the boundary. There aren't that many tax dollars that flat-out follow the nose count, how many people live here, how many don't. The, one of them that does is what was approved earlier, the Road Use Tax Fund. So I think at that population, 200, 250 people, additional people, not talking about property taxes, but road use taxes, you're probably looking at $25,000 to $30,000 annually that would follow those people. Of course, there's also services that have to be provided to those people. Of course, they also pay property taxes. So, anyway, something to think about.
Yeah. The other thing to think about is the project valuation is at about 20 million. So yes, you're going to have more services, yes, more demands because of occupants, but you're also getting taxes from a $20 million project.
Yeah, no doubt. The other thing, and I don't, I don't know how to, you know, I'm just going to make this observation, and I don't know what it means. I really don't. And it's not, and it's not a policy decision for me, obviously, anyway. But you think about the, you know, it's a census year, but the 2010 census, I think there were 1,051 residents in City of University Heights. 200 to 250 people, that's a 20% to 25% increase in your population. You know, just that many more neighbors and citizens and voters and all those kinds of things. It has at least the potential to be a pretty significant change in the community. And again, I'm not, I just want you to keep that in mind.
Couldn't that be written into the agreement? I mean, just, you know, that we would like the road use tax?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Which is currently 121.50 per capita. And I know 250 is being maybe a big number, but it's still around 20, 25,000 a year. Written in the agreement so that traffic coming through affects University Heights, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that could be a negotiation point. And it doesn't just have to be a 2080 agreement that talks about revenue sharing on the basis of property taxes. You could say, yeah, but those people would be living here. We would get road use tax money, so we'd like to have that be part of the compensation. That could go, again, all of that could go both ways. But yeah, that could be part of the discussion. Absolutely.
But as you say, a main point is, this isn't just like the Swisher tract, where we can do anything we want with it, or like the hotel, Dr. Flom's property, or this property. It's owned by the University of Iowa and the state of Iowa. And so they're going to control that in the future. I think that's a big factor.
Would you say it's accurate that, like, this project is happening, whether or not we agree to move boundaries, or whether or not we take action on certain, I mean, it's, they don't comply with local zoning, right? I mean-
Well, no, they do-
They do for now.
Yeah, they do for this kind of a project. So I guess my answer to that is no. I mean, I think some, I think City of University Heights has a lot to say about this.
Okay.
So Virginia, think about it this way. So long as they engage a private developer, zoning attaches.
Okay.
Zoning is there. That's our protection, or Iowa City's protection. As long as, so long as that developer disappears, and it's just the university building, then we're left with, neither city has much control.
I do want to put up, I don't know how to do this very well without just having y'all see me Google things, which is fine. It just seems awkward.
Now, here's a fifth alternative that I was thinking about, just, you know, just think, I'm just thinking about options. That's all I'm thinking about. And that is, we have another situation in University Heights that involves a project that is in another jurisdiction, and it relies for some of its access or services through University Heights. And this winter, we are now moving to service those areas. And I was wondering, Lytham Development by Lemur and Olive Court and Marietta is an island within, a donut hole within University Heights. And I just do not see the giving away of boundary lines without an equivocal gain of some other boundaries.
Right. I just don't, I really would feel very bad about changing the boundary line, simply because of the permanency of it.
So just to, you know, option number five, just another tossing out there because that we're touching on a really important, an important issue. I have, has, could this council consider, or the public, provide us with some feedback on going to ask, well, maybe we could consider potentially moving boundaries if we gained some of that lost territory through acquisition of Lytham, the Lytham Development property?
And that's been discussed informally, and I don't think the people at Iowa City saw that as a very realistic possibility, but it was discussed, and we can discuss it some more if you want.
Well, I don't know, Steve. You came back to council with three options. I don't know what else has been discussed.
So I think what I said was that there are many options.
Right.
But the three that seem to get the most legs. So the one comment I want to make, and there's two more that I'd like to make, but the first one is that the developers in the university, and I think it's fair to say even the City of Iowa City, mostly want to know how the University Heights City Council feels or thinks about the boundary movement. Okay? I think, I can't speak for these other people, but I've heard them say this one way or another, all of them. I don't think it's that big of a deal to anybody whether the boundary shifts east or west. I mean, I think Iowa City is willing to say, you want to take it on? We'll shift it west, and it can be in University Heights. Okay? So I think that the council has the ability to say, yeah, that's what we'd like. We'd like to not give up the land. We'd like to gain a little land, and we'll take on the rezoning and handle that process. Okay? So I do want to make that clear. The second thing, and I pointed this out last night for those that were here, but again, so what I've got, you know, this little outline in red here, that is the university- but again, so what I've got, you know, this little outline in red here, that is the university club property. All right? So this little, this is Burke Dale. Here's where we are. Okay? Back building of OUP. The university property, so, so this is, this is again, the city limits line, but all of this is university property, you know, north up to the Finkbine commuter lot.
Tree budget.
Okay? And so this, this is, is not only a city limits line, Iowa, or excuse me, University Heights Swisher Tract, okay? But it's also an ownership line. So this is University Heights and this is Iowa City. This is owned by the city of University Heights and this is owned by the University of Iowa. The University of Iowa has said that regardless of whether the boundary down by Melrose, the one I've been talking about, regardless of whether it might shift east and the project be in Iowa City, or shift west and the project be in University Heights, either way, if, if it's important or something desirable to the city of University Heights to move this line, not just the city limits line, but the ownership line, if, if the city of University Heights would like to own a little more land over here to enlarge Swisher Tract or to
Make a trail or an entrance or something.
You know, for the property just north of OUP, or possibly even look at some access to the commuter lot from the north side of Swisher Tract. Okay? If, if that was important to the city of University Heights, the university has said that they're amenable to, to doing that, that they would be willing to not just agree to change city limits line, but to actually convey ownership of the property to the city of University Heights.
How much have they offered down here by Emerald and further west? Have they offered any of that?
No.
Because that's what we need, not the Swisher Tract business.
No more ravines. I mean, we've got.
Yeah.
That would be the only alternative.
Yeah, and I, that hasn't been discussed, but
That's Iowa City.
Well, it's all, if we're all negotiating, it's negotiated.
This is the university that you're talking about that offered that.
I don't, I don't think it's a benefit to us at all.
Yeah. That's fine. I just, that's something the university had said, so.
I'd be interested.
What Nate pointed out was, you know, that line that's where Burke Dale is last night. He pointed out the Burke Dale line and he said, you know, we're trying to put in some greenery, but maybe you want a trail running along there or something going back to the Swisher Tract. We'd be, I mean, they could work that in, but that's owned by the University of Iowa, that land there. And the university, and David last night said, we could look at that.
Yeah. So that's, I just wanted to point that out. That's a, that's another thing. So, so really, in my mind, the council, if it's at a point where you, you feel like you can provide general direction in the sense of telling, we want to shift it this way or shift it that way, or if you want more information, go explore other possible options and come back. I think that's kind of where things are right now.
I think the public just learned about this tonight. I think it's only fair that we open it up for public feedback. I, for one, I'm not, I'm not ready to make a particular direction, but I'm very interested in hearing what residents have to say because it's a significant change.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think five people should tell them what the city wants to do. I think we need to have time to talk about it as a city. Because this is, this is earth shaking sort of. It's, it's our future for the next 100 years or more.
Um, do we have, like, do we have either?
A significant number of people here, maybe like 25.
Do we have either hard copies or digital copies of any of this?
I have the digital copy of this and I have, I think, a few other digital copies.
And do we, is there a?
Maybe we should have a special meeting or?
Well, sorry that we, the two that weren't here last night would like to have a special meeting.
It's, it's difficult to do this during a council meeting when we have business to do. And I know we're having a special meeting.
I think there's a little too much to think about to make a decision on this.
I think a special meeting sometime in October would be appropriate.
I think there's a lot of potential here though, that I'd like to move somewhat quickly if we're going to do it because I, I guess I don't know what we lose by not moving quickly, but I assume that it would be helpful to move quickly.
Well, I don't want to be in a rush. I would, I feel like we've been in a rush far too often and had really catastrophic outcomes. And this one is just one of those that needs to be taken timely and need to get feedback.
I mean, quickly to get feedback. I think.
Well, October, public meeting is a great venue.
October 8th is our regular council meeting. It's early in the month. So are you thinking?
16th, right after.
The 15th? Oh, let me think. What do I have?
A Wednesday would be great because that keeps me out of other.
Well, I'm out of town from the 16th through the 19th. I'm out of state. Right that. But I, I'm available 13, 14, 15, or 14, 15. Or we could do it 8, 9, 10, or 1, 2, 3, like that.
Right. So to allay your concerns, Nick, they're not ready to break ground right now. They don't contemplate breaking ground till sometime next year and then concluding at the following year. So.
I'm sure they'd want to start knowing about zoning to see the direction.
Yeah. Let, let me say one thing.
Is there anybody who feels that we want to change the boundary to make our city smaller? I mean, I think we're all in agreement there, right? So that helps knock one item off the list.
Yeah, I mean, it does. I mean, if that's, if that's sort of consensus, that's really what, what I think we're being asked. You're being asked.
So.
Steve went option one or option two?
Steve, were you going to say something about timing?
I was. Two things actually. Yeah, the, the, so obviously, the, this project can't get underway until, I mean, they don't even know what, what city they're going to be in, much less have they applied for rezoning or anything. So there's, there's some steps that need to be taken. They're not going to be building on this anytime soon. Having said that, the portion of, of this, what I would call this overall project, that's not shown here, but continues west along Melrose. There's, there's a proposal for several more clusters of these townhomes, okay? And those are going to be in Iowa City. And that's kind of not on the table for discussion tonight. But I just, I want to, when we're talking about timing, I want to be clear about this. The university and the developer regard those as completely separate from this project. And I think that they, the part that's in University Heights, and I think they will be moving forward with that relatively quickly from what I understood them to be saying. So I think they'll be going to Iowa City and asking for rezoning. And I think they'll be, if they, assuming they succeed in that, I think they'll be building those townhomes kind of as soon as they can. That's
They, they have a new building over there. Did it replace the Finkbine clubhouse?
Yeah, it's the clubhouse.
Yeah.
It's on them. It's on them.
Okay.
And is there anybody who feels that we wouldn't want to ask the boundary to be expanded north and west to just go all the way up to the railroad tracks, the parking lot and the road?
No, I wouldn't agree with that. If we're going to ask for anything, I'd say we ask for expansion along Melrose so that we can have a proper entry there, which is what the vision project had in mind.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Those details need to be worked out. But you just want to know if there's
I don't think we're disagreeing, Dottie. That's.
She's just trying to figure out your contours. Yeah.
One other point that I, comes to my mind, and maybe Steve would have an opinion or maybe Trudy would have an opinion. I, I feel like economies of scale when it comes to adding on 250 residents or so, I don't, I, I think our, our police department, for example, is, is of the size where it could handle the additional population without it being a kind of a per capita increase in cost. I feel like because of the economies of scale, I guess that's just a point that I would make. I don't know if you have an opinion on that, chief? In terms of, you know, if we bring on 250 more people, are you going to have to increase?
Sergeant Tucker and I actually discussed it today, following last night's meeting. And I, I agree in principle with what you're saying. I envision that property generating calls for service, much like One University Place does. There are medical calls, there are fire calls. They're talking about active adult, I think is the term you used, but they described it as an upscale, high value development, specifically no student housing, yes. So if there's 120 units and 200 to 250, as, as Steve hypothesized, I think that that is something that we could absorb, absorb without, without changing staffing. We also talked about Iowa City Fire, who is contracted with University Heights being right across the street. And that's kind of a zero. I mean, whether it's Iowa City or University Heights, they are going to be the ones providing services. So I think our, from a public safety, our infrastructure costs don't increase or increase only incrementally. Personally, I think it brings value in to both the department and, and the community. So we discussed that today at what we have for our staff meetings.
And I'll second that by saying that when One University Place was, was, became, was adopted, we actually added one police officer to the staff and it went from three to four. And now, you know, with the hotel coming, we're up to five. So in any event, I just wanted, just let you know that I think you're, you're on the right track with respect to, it's just, it's comparable.
And most of our calls for service do with traffic enforcement, quality of life issues. They aren't driven by, well, there was the row rest last month. There was, I think, one burglary call. They aren't driven by some of the higher crime that comes from lower density, lower socioeconomic housing. That's just not how university has had the foresight to develop. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The other points I would just make, I, I think that traffic and aesthetics are important things that, important parts of this that the city of University Heights will care about and that will impact the city. And so I think that's another factor weighing in favor of expanding the boundary. I know that it sounds like everybody else was in that boat. I was kind of on the fence. I was a little concerned about taking on, you know, another big project that, you know, it's just like any project could be divisive. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm hoping because of the location of this that it's not as, you know, prone to create conflict because it's not changing, you know, it's a commercial use already. So I don't often narrate, but that's just kind of a topic.
Someone mentioned entry and I didn't make this point, but the university and the developer have been clear that they would, would incorporate, you know, a suitable entry signage into the proposal, entry to University Heights on Melrose. That's something that had been discussed.
What about that median and all of that? That will be changed then?
I think so. I mean.
Because I think the signage they suggested was on the side, not in the center.
Well, that was one depiction of it at least.
Where's the other one?
You wanted to speak.
I see. Okay.
University Heights, with these other projects that university won and the hotel, everybody's been so concerned about preserving the residence area in University Heights. And we had people from Melrose Park that sold their houses because they didn't want to look at this. They thought it was a monstrosity. My question is, if the university has all that land north of Finkbine, why don't move all that congestion up there and have a parking lot for the golf course? You're going to do away with the parking on Melrose Avenue. One thing that the university, with the hospital, the athletic facilities, they keep taking up land and no parking. No parking. And it is that they have these ideas and they pay no taxes for services or anything, but every one of us, this table is paying for those services to the university to maintain our utilities and everything else. I think this whole concept is ridiculous. It ought to get stuff back more from the highway since they've got the land. Myself, I mean, they don't, they're not asking for part of the Swisher Tract, which we got and need for a park, but why not get stuff back where they got a better view instead of looking at the backs and the roofs and the fence of the Brookshire and all this other stuff?
Right.
I think they're just trying to make it as difficult as they can. Traffic wise, we got, I don't know if they're going to have underground parking, another entrance. You wanted to beautify the entrance to University Heights. It's getting more cobbled up with another street coming in between what's there now in Brookshire. We got, the whole place is getting condensed. We're losing too much, the way I feel. And the traffic is still going to come through two narrow lanes through University Heights and back up, clear out to pass Norman Trek on four lanes. Ding, ding, ding.
Thank you, Paul. So you wanted to, let's go with what you said. You wanted to kind of see if we had a consensus of council, one way or the other, and then about moving the boundary west or east, or I think people were saying west, so that it's in University Heights.
I mean, I would just ask for, you know, like if we're moving the boundary west, let's go ahead and have Finkbine commuter drive be the new boundary all the way up to the railroad tracks and the lot. That's what I would request. Maybe they'll say, no, you can't have that much, but why not ask for the whole chunk?
Well, with the renovation of Melrose, we're going to be having, you know, even more traffic and bike, bike lanes on each side. And it's already a mess there by the athletic club. I'm inclined to agree with Paul. I think they need to move it up. They have, they have land, 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 all the way out to Correville. And they can better use it.
So if we ask for the boundary to be changed so that that whole area is now University Heights, then our zoning commission can take up that idea?
We don't want the road though. That serves their commuter.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we want the road to stay. They want the road to stay. They can't, they don't, it's not in their budget.
So are you talking about like the ownership line or the municipal line or both?
Both.
Ownership.
Ownership and municipal line. I mean, I'm, you know, maybe we shouldn't say these kinds of things in a public meeting. That'd be my opening offer. The whole thing.
You wanted to include the Finkbine Road all the way up to the?
No.
No, I'm saying that would be the boundary.
That would be the boundary.
The project.
On the east side?
Yeah. So if we're talking about moving city boundaries, I would move the city boundary to right there.
Right.
Are you on the west side of the?
East.
Or the east? Because your pencil kind of went west.
No, just east.
I'm just trying to understand. So you're saying east of the road?
East of the road, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Going west up to the road. But Iowa City can keep the road. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's their commuter lot, right?
Right. I don't know. I mean.
And?
That's my opinion.
And you agree with that? And maybe you want to?
I agree with Paul. I, I think.
So are you asking that they shift their project up north?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we would need to own, I mean, if we're asking them to shift it north, we would need to have them already agree to give that to us, right? I mean, are you, unless you're just saying push it outside of University Heights and we get no money and no?
Which they could do and they talked about. They don't want to have too.
Well, I don't know that. If you want to push the whole thing outside of University Heights, then we don't get any revenue off of it. That's, that's an opinion, but.
Hypocrisy there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Now's the time to get rid of them, everything being so compressed.
Mm-hmm. You mean high density?
The only chance you have.
So you want all that green space up there?
So you want all that green space up there?
I just don't want to lose any city.
Boundary.
Yeah, and in, increase if we can.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think.
Okay, so.
It's a basic tactic of negotiation, go hide. Let's, just do it.
That's where it starts.
So, Steve, why don't you go back?
They might give it to us.
Say the council's leaning towards?
Yeah. That's what.
You know, right now. And we need to talk about where the property line would be, boundary.
Yeah.
And go from there. Wouldn't you think that's a starting point?
But you know what, Louise, I keep thinking, we're, we're going with this ask, and then we're going to have public comments in October. I think it would be really wise for us to hold off on this preliminary decision, see how it's impacted by public comments and roll it out.
From Virginia that you wanted a public, a meeting, but I don't know. I mean, you were kind of saying to me, I don't want a meeting.
I, I want a meeting, I want to hear from people. We're hearing, we're hearing right now from some people, but I think we need to have.
So I was looking at the calendar.
This is.
Yeah, I would say a meeting, but I, I think also that the current council's inclined, maybe, if it's fair to say, we're inclined to take on as much, you know, of the area as we can, and at the same time, need to get public input in terms of the proposed development and reselling.
I think that's fair for, yeah, for them to be told, yeah.
Sure.
I agree with your statement.
I'd like to look at the dates, if we could, because otherwise, I'll just have to send out an email. We're meeting on the 24th of September for the rental issues at 7:00 PM, and then we could meet the first week of October. The meeting is on the 8th of October, the regular council meeting, we could meet the 9th or the 10th, or we could meet the 14th or the 15th.
Can you give dates, day with those dates? The 14th is what, Wednesday, Thursday?
Monday, Tuesday.
Mondays are not.
Mondays are not good for you.
Tuesdays are not good.
Tuesday's the 15th. The 16th, we're flying out.
How about the 9th or 10th?
The 9th or the 10th is Wednesday, Thursday, right after the council meeting.
This meeting wouldn't have to be incredibly long.
Right.
I would also suggest that we really inform the public of how serious this decision is, and how, and give them information, so that we have a, a very good crowd.
Right.
Because we had, what, maybe 10 or 12 last night?
Yeah, so I think a flyer to go out.
A flyer would be better, yeah.
To be distributed to, to the community.
Because I think it's that serious.
Right.
Well, we've done a postcard mailing before.
Yeah, but that was expensive, 300, 400.
Yeah.
We can respectively each walk neighborhoods. Nick, you have Melrose and Virginia, Lisa and Dottie.
And the future is at stake.
Yep.
So, are you saying the 9th or the 10th, or are you saying the 14th or the 15th, Monday and Tuesday?
Can I take a Thursday, that, if that's?
The 10th?
The Thursday's the 10th.
That would work.
The 10th is best for me.
And this is for October?
October 10th, Thursday at 7:00 PM, and we'll say an hour to an hour and a half, tops. You know, last night it was just an hour. And people didn't comment very much. I let them ask questions, but they didn't comment.
Well, there's a lot of information for them to try to process, and if they aren't familiar with any of.
Well, I know this word has gone out.
Yeah.
Other people have said, so October 10th, okay, so we'll, we'll go on from that. That's enough direction, right, Steve?
Yeah, I think so.
And then, so we need to go down to your legal report, and get through that quickly.
Okay. I'm, uh, taking minutes for Chris tonight, too, so.
I know.
Can I, can I just go back to one other question? We don't have, like, really any of this on the website right now, right?
Nothing.
Okay. Are there any files or documents that could be put on the website?
Is for the communication technology, and I think that's.
Yeah, they wanted to, we're going to set that aside, we're still working on it, I'm sorry, I keep thinking we haven't done. Yeah. Then, second consideration of ordinance 239, which is just bringing our, all of our refuse collection ordinances into line with the current removal contract, reference, removal contract with Johnson County Refuse.
And motion adoption?
Second.
A motion by Virginia, and second by Sylvia.
Nick.
The method was next.
Yeah, that's all right.
Everything's plugged up. Is there any discussion, roll call vote?
Kizara?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And the next, next item is probably, it's on my report, but it's really more Josiah's to take on, probably it's the 1939, which concerns kind of adjusting responsibilities for snow removal.
I sent out, so, I sent out a revised-ish copy of 1939 yesterday, redline version and a, and a clean version. This follows up on a meeting we had with Iowa City Public Works Department and our snow removal contractor originally, on trying to, as the, as the resolution states, sort of clean up some of the real-world application of how they're both interacting with each other on the streets. And I think it was two meetings ago, we had Mark Phelps here from Hockeye to sort of talk more about it and his, his thoughts on it. So, all of that led up to the decision we'd have a resolution to make the change, because it changes the map, which is part of his contract you guys have with him. So that's the resolution, that's the background of it, and that's the map. This is, so let me talk about the changes I made yesterday. This is the same map we've looked at, with the exception of, I've highlighted in blue right there, the loop sort of behind us in the real world here, of Sunset and Grand and Golf View. That, that was something I didn't originally understand, that Mark was trying to communicate to me, that the, the original idea was that Melrose in green there would be transferred to the city of Iowa City to plow snow and put product down on that primarily. And then, since they're going through there all the time anyway, because they have to get back and forth through there to get to other parts of their city. The, the pink, more local street section in the Lytham Development, there's two of them, the Olive Lemer, you know, loop, the U.
And that's the pink.
That's the pink, yeah. What do I call it?
Oh, pink.
Okay, pink, all right.
They call it pink, totally different.
The other one would be the Marietta cul-de-sac there at the end of Marietta, which is, again, part of the Lytham Development in Iowa City. So the background there, again, is that Iowa City goes through there, Mark Phelps goes through there, he's not like he's going to stop and do a, you know, 12-point turn, so he's, they're already taking care of it. He goes down to Marietta, he does the cul-de-sac. And then the, the last one would be Tower Court, which is in Iowa City, but is accessed through University Heights, and was identified as an area that University Heights could pick up somewhat, because it's easier for them to access it, but also just trying to even out the length and the scope of work for taking on all Melrose. So that's the same. Like I said, the new, the new part is the, the blue is something that Mark said, since the snow contract and this map all started, this building was built, and the police department moved up here, and so it became more of a focus to make sure that area out here is cleaned early and has access. That intersection was rebuilt, obviously, with the new signal and the new intersection, the median. Again, for them to get through there, they have to go through Grand and come back both ways. And that also sort of matches up with what they've been doing to try and address, like, the questions about Golf View and Melrose and the intakes down there, and spending more time in that area. So, that's actually, that'd be, the changes are that that would become a, a street main, as it's defined in your contract, because it's what they're doing anyway, because they have to come and do it first. And so that, the green goes away in some respects from the, like, the scope, but the blue is added, and then the pink would be added to the all streets. So that's the map change. The other change I made, when I sent out yesterday, originally I had all of the contract costs revised for all streets and main streets. I, I thought that's what Mark had, had agreed with me on, because we were trying to identify, like, what's the scope of your work and what changes, and we're looking at street length. And when he agreed with me, yes, that's the change, he meant this map, not the cost, so.
Right, he said there wouldn't be any change in the cost.
Yeah, it's going to be the same. The, the thrust of this was, let's make it easier, let's have Iowa City do Melrose, clean it more often and more frequently, and give Mark more time to focus on some of these other city streets, without adding any costs to the city.
A motion approval of 1939?
Second.
A motion by Virginia, second by Sylvia.
Moore?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Kizara?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Thank you. So, Steve, we're going to go down to, we did.
Yeah, I'm done, I think.
You're done. Are there any questions for Steve? Okay, Chris sent around a report, I believe, and the treasurer, you sent out the warrants. Are there any additions or corrections to the warrants? Is there any objection to pay in the warrants? The warrants will be paid by unanimous council. The chief report, Troy sent around a written report, he also emailed one that we have in front of us. Troy, you want to come up, because?
Jeremy Stennis is leaving, if you didn't notice that. I wish that he wasn't leaving until after the football season ended. He, it has to do with family, when he came back from West Virginia, he and I had a good talk. Wasn't surprised that he was looking, I was surprised that he went that quickly. It's both unfortunate, and it's an opportunity for UHPD, so, moving on. Football, UI has been very responsive to feedback. They've changed staffing along Melrose because of that. There have been very few complaints about football. Two are listed, there was one additional that came this afternoon, a gentleman who was walking through the pass lot, or back lot, grabbed Sergeant Tucker long enough to complain about porta potties. He said that in the past, he had some negative, what he viewed to be negative interactions with University Heights regarding placement of his porta potties, and I have no idea who this gentleman was, and he felt that that standard was no longer being applied to anybody else. I had to chuckle. Please take a look at the Data-Driven Justice Initiative that we are now a part of. The mayor signed an MOU, that is a really, really neat thing. Nationwide, we're just going to be a very, very tiny part of it, but it's good to get involved in that. I do have to chuckle, it is not Arnold Adventures, they aren't doing zip lines, but it's supposed to be Arnold Adventures is, or Arnold Ventures is what it is now retitled. So I'll fix that, Lisa, and get that to you. You can do this all day, you told me.
I was wondering about that.
Please look at the notes from my meeting. Dottie, Nick and I were to meet with Kevin Sanders regarding moving some of the requirements of UH ordinance 235 forward. I would like to move forward, or I'd like to ask council to move forward with seating that committee. I'm hoping that we never have a complaint, but really, the committee should be seated and be in place, so that we're not having to go through this while there's media attention shined on. I mean, it's just, it really needs to be taken care of.
Okay, I'll motion that we begin, that we commence seating of the Citizens Review Board.
And I'm second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, and second by Dottie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
The structure of that's outlined, I won't go over it, and, and committee, or council did all that. There really is no specific requirements, other than some residency requirements, and then the NAAC participation in law enforcement. But again, you guys can deal with that, I'd be glad to help as you want me to. One of the things that Kevin and I talked about was ongoing training. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, a couple things, I only have the numbers from the first game. University Heights dedicated 54.25 hours of man-hours to assist University Iowa Police Department with the football game. When you compute the overtime rate, what we are invoicing them for, that equates to $2,983 worth of reimbursable activity. Those officers were out, they were out last year, last year, University Heights paid for them, this year, University Iowa Police Department's paying for them. If that continues for all seven games, that will equate to just over 20,000, almost $21,000 worth of invoiced officer hours to the university. Kel-Tec has completed all the cars, Jim Baker has got all the computers up and running. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Kel-Tec, when they were down here last time, I was talking to them about only having enough body cameras for full-time officers, and that on football games, we had all of our officers out there. They came up with a loan where they're giving me additional cameras to get us through football season at no cost. Really, that's the only things they have to talk about, the insurance stuff is ongoing. Gentlemen with the blinds we're in today, Louise, and I'll see about installing those yet this week. Sorry, any questions for me? I know that was very, very rushed.
Take home vehicles.
Troy, what, what about the trucks on Marietta? Have the food trucks, is there any movement on that?
Uh, based on the mixed signals that I got from council and the need to discuss it, and the need for three ordinance readings in order to, to take that back, to make a change, because it would require an ordinance changing. Diego Garcia, the, the vendor who had approached me about that, I spoke with him at the next farmer's market, he would like to, rather than, it was his opinion, rather than try to do something on the fly and do it haphazardly, he said, you know, I'll just, I'll look at doing this in the future. We are selling parking passes up there, but I, I still think that, that, that's worth considering. I also talked with Sylvia, I think probably at that same farmer's market, and I'm, I'm not sure where that that's going, but that is not happening this year, I would not be surprised if he makes a proposal. Nick, you asked me about the take-home policy, that was at council's request for take-home vehicle policy. I reviewed a number of policies, just for the record, Iowa City does not happen to have one, they have limited take-home vehicles. But I reviewed a number of them, I relied heavily on one, but I plagiarized from many of them, and put together this one that is probably more expansive than we need, but I think that it covers kind of now and moving forward. So again, I am, I've drafted that and reviewed it and made changes, I'm comfortable with what I've, I've circulated, so if y'all want to take a look at that at your convenience, but I am, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with that.
I have a, a few.
Sure.
Technicalities that really would involve the rest of council, because they're policy concerns and a legal question. But the first one is, I think we need to just define the term off-duty, it occurs a lot of times, I think that's something Steve can help quickly.
Okay.
Generate a definition. Because of prior employment litigation, on Section 2, subsection B, I think the phrase for cause, we just need to eliminate it, it's presented a lot of interesting issues for the city. On Section 3.
I'm sorry, where was that, Sylvia?
Yeah, it's, I can share with you my markup.
Okay, sure, sure, sure.
I just want to quickly go through them. On Section 3, general regulations, officers are, it involves the use of the vehicles for officers that are on duty and off-duty, and then passengers. What are we talking about for passengers? Because I'm, I'm getting concerned about liability, if, if there's a collision involving the off-duty officer, and you have a passenger, and not even a person who's being taken into custody.
Yeah, and the, and I'll be glad to, the only thing that I, the only time that I could foresee that situation, or the time that I was trying to envision, is if somebody had a spouse or a significant other, for instance, that was here doing a ride-along, or that worked in the community, and I'll use myself as an example, my wife works at university hospitals, so when the snow starts flying, and I stop riding my motorcycle, and if I'm taking the department vehicle back and forth, and I'm traveling to this location, but she can walk three blocks farther and be to work, is it okay with her to ride with me then to work and to ride home? That's the type of situation that I was trying to envision.
Okay, and for me, it's a question of liability. I think in instances like that, even the ride-along, or the share-along, or the drive-along requires indemnification. We have it for the farmer's market and a number of other city events, and consistent with city policy, there needs to be some, some containment of that liability.
Okay.
So, maybe you can talk with Steve on that.
What do you want to?
What do you want to, what kind of indemnity do you have in mind?
Are you talking about a waiver-type thing, or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely. And then the general regulations, that same section, number item F. I really did appreciate how you were looking for the reputation of our police officers that are off-duty and not parked at an alcoholic beverage. How about also adding an adult entertainment center or something to that effect?
And you're going to share your markup with me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
And that's all I could offer you in a, like, ten-minute review that I did before, so.
Sure.
And I would just say, I'm curious if council, in terms of the food truck, you know, we're trying to get value out of the Marietta parking. I was on the fence about that issue before. I had received some feedback that the concern was it would spill into the rest of the community. So I'm, I, you know, continue to be kind of in the fence, but I'm curious to hear if other people have thoughts about that. I heard from some people who are very passionate and wanted to speak on that for quite a while, in terms of not wanting it to be something that we allow, because how it would spill into the community. Because if the city can do it, why can't residents do it? If, you know, some residents can do it, why can't residents do it in the entire town? And so if anyone has ideas that think it's a bright line where we can make this work, or don't think it should work. I'd just be curious to give some clarity, so that, I don't know, you've been using a lot of time on this issue, but
I have not, I re-
helps you, we could give you some direction, but if it, just drop it, we can just drop it.
Can we also just, yeah, because that's, that's really what happened. I think we could do an ordinance, a temporary ordinance variance, temporary, which means we're not changing our ordinance at all. It's temporary. It's limited just to one location, so there's no slippery slope of any other location. It happens to be a location the city owns. City does not own land anywhere else. So it kind of limits your area where you can be. And it's limited to food vendors. Right now, the vendor group is only interested in five. Because they're going to manage each other for collection of, for collection of trash.
In the same location where the farmer's market was, so that's kind of a no-brainer.
So I think that, you know, we have, what, two football games, game days under our belt, we know.
We have five, five remaining home games, so that's correct.
We know that we haven't really sold a whole lot. And if we were to bring in five food trucks, each at two hundred, that's about a thousand, which is a considerable amount of something that you can try. So it's
And in speaking with Diego, Sylvia, and my apologies for interrupting, one, I relayed, again, the mixed feelings. And I did use the word slippery slope, because Virginia brought that up, not only to location, but I remember bringing it up as to items sold, merchandise. I mean, what's to stop it from becoming T-shirt? And you just addressed that. Diego is sensitive to that. Plus, Diego realizes that he pitched the proposal late in the game, too. He, again, he said four to five food vendors, but in my last conversation with him, he wasn't, they need to plan also. So it is, I really, personally, not professionally, personally, I believe it's worth exploring. Professionally, I don't believe that will negatively impact the services that I'm able to provide or tax, tax my officers. I find that group to be very compliant. It goes to what, what University of Heights wants. I, there's only five games left. How quickly?
I'd like to have input on it, though, because it's a big change.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do it this year, I don't think.
And Diego is willing to pitch it next year and put together a more thought-out, drawn-out proposal.
But also, I, I mean, we've heard from other people who, I don't know if it was because we brought this up, they want to do it. And including the hotel developers who weren't, you know, brought it up, they want to do it. So, I don't know.
Right.
You know, it can be, it could be a very time-consuming issue for council to be addressing all of that.
All I can tell you is, we didn't reach out to the, to the city attorney. All of our research has been done between ourselves and common sense and taking public input from residents. So all I can tell you is, we've saved a lot of money to the taxpayers by not drawing on legal services at this point. But if the consensus, if we can settle the consensus tonight, let's do it, so that there's no question going forward. So where does, just by a show of hands, who's interested in a temporary food truck setup along Marietta?
For this year?
For just, for the remainder of the season, temporary.
I'm not.
Okay, so three to ten. Right?
See, I wasn't in favor of porta potties either, or parking on lawns. But, you know, we have it. And I can't see that there's any negative to bringing food trucks in and put them where farmer's market was. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Nick just said he wanted to put it to next year, and
Yeah, I'm
you're not in favor.
I'm not in favor of doing it this year. I think if we want to explore this for next year. I think I, most of the feedback I heard was, which was maybe four or five people, I mean, not a lot, was, yeah, just try it, see what happens.
Yeah.
So I'm not pretty
Feedback that I receive, which is not to not even test it. Now, for people who want to sell T-shirts or sell out of their front yards, that is completely changing the parameters that this group would be working with. So if they want to sell alongside the five, you know, set up all of Marietta as a vendor.
I don't think there's consensus, so let's just move on.
Yeah, you're right on that.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's been going really well, football has, in general. Thank you, Troy.
Yeah.
I just want to, I should say that.
If you're all receiving any sort of input from your neighbors, constituents, I would appreciate that being passed along, positive or negative. One of the three complaints was specifically about a UH ITO, so I'm very familiar with the incident, because it happens to be me. But anyway, those have all been passed along or being dealt with.
Well, I would say just generally, the reputation of the force in general is great, I think. You know, the articles have been great, you know, your reputation, I think.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I feel like, and I wasn't here last year, but I do feel like we have a stake and control in what is happening in our community. Particularly post-game, when you have tens of thousands of people flooding through here in an hour and a half time period, so.
I'm really happy to see some more mature officers, too. I don't know if that's like
Hopefully, we can continue that trend. I'm already reaching out, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And so we're going to go on to Virginia's report.
Yeah, okay, I'll start with the Swisher contract. I made one change since you've last seen this that is notable, which is attachment D. The resident at seventy-seven Olive Court has reported that that tree on the boulevard has started dropping branches. This is one of the ones I was worried about last spring, when we said we were going to cancel the Olive Court project for the year. I said we might still have to go back and take out some of those trees that were planned to come down this year. So I've added this on there. I hope that's okay with council. I walked the area with Kip and with Josiah to make sure that we have things marked accurately and that everybody is on the same page with what the scope of work is. So I've motioned that I will start circulating this contract tomorrow, unless anyone has any other changes to be made.
No, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Virginia and second by Sylvia to distribute the contracts tomorrow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will you post it to the city website as well, please? Okay, thanks.
Sure, I'll get a copy order at least at a post. Leaf vacuuming, we got two quotes back. I did not hear back from Turf Masters. So we got Greg's Lawn and Landscaping, and we got Quality Care. So Quality Care raised their rates a little bit over last year. Their price came in at sixteen thousand five hundred for three leaf pickups. Greg's priced things a little differently, because they said, since they've never done this before, they just don't know how long it's going to take them. And so they priced their work per day, plus disposal fees at the dump, which run, you know, probably about a hundred and twenty dollars per dump truck load, in my experience. And I guess I don't know totally how big their trucks are, but that's what I think it would be. If you, so we kind of have to compare apples to oranges here. Last year, it took Quality Care three days to do the first pickup, and I think they did the next two in two days. And then one, maybe, was it another two days? Anyway, they did them faster the second time around. It was about six or seven, no, that would be like eight or nine days' worth of work, right? So if you are trying to look at this priced on days per work, Greg's Lawn and Landscaping would have to finish all three pickups in six days to be comparable on price. I don't know that a new contractor can do that. Our experience says a new contractor is not going to finish three pickups in six days.
Now let's have bigger machinery.
So I would, I guess I'd recommend we go with Quality Care and get them scheduled.
I was going to ask if we can go back to Quality and tell them, we're capped by our budget. I mean, we only have X amount of dollars, so, and you have two bids. Can they, you know, limit their expenses to that amount?
I mean, they're just not going to pick up all the leaves, then.
Well, I do know that people have increased expenses
Yes.
Normally. And so it's a, how much percent increase would you say?
It's fifteen hundred dollars over what, well, a little, a little under fifteen hundred dollars, because their contract last year was fifteen thousand and change. I can't remember exactly what the number was, but, so this year it's sixteen five.
I'd say that's reasonable, considering.
I think that, you know, the thoroughness of the leaf pickup is a lot more important to residents than a thousand dollars on a city budget, but.
So you're going to go ahead and make a motion for
Okay, so I motion that we accept the Quality Care bid.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Dottie. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, very good.
Okay, so do we want to stick with more or less the same dates as last year? Last year, it was November fifteenth, November nineteenth, and April first.
If you can move
Want to move the second one?
If you can move them a little bit further.
Move the second pickup back by a week and a half or so?
Yeah. Because we were worried about it being warm at about that time. It just worked out, but the more leaves drop, the better.
Okay, so
Snow is better.
Something more like November fifth, November thirtieth, and April first? Okay, and again, like, if there's snow in the forecast, we might have to make some game time decisions on it.
That's Thanksgiving weekend, though, right?
Yeah, is it?
The thirtieth. I mean, I'm just going to say that.
Thirtieth.
Better look at that.
Because I know it's like the twenty-ninth or something this year.
Well, they have two in November. They're, wait, the twenty-eighth is Thanksgiving.
Twenty-eighth, I mean, yeah, the game's twenty-ninth.
Okay, and thirtieth is a Saturday, so that doesn't make any sense either. We could, November fourth and November twenty-fifth? Those are both Mondays?
The twenty-fifth.
That week, I think the university will be off.
Do we have a game then?
Thanksgiving. Yeah, we have
Twenty-fifth is a Monday.
We have a game, no, Nebraska's away, but I think we have a late game.
Normally.
So no one will be here.
I don't have my cell phone to help you, because all of those are in my calendar.
Can you rake before you leave town?
The weekend before that, because the game says Lori.
How about I pick some, how about I pick some dates with Louise this week? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So long as they're not warm and early, thanks.
I don't know if things are going to be warm or not.
Nobody knows.
Yeah, we play Illinois on the twenty-fifth at home.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay, so we don't want to have stuff out?
Well, I mean, we're going to, I don't know, I'm just saying, we do have a late game, I remember that.
All right.
And the week before is Minnesota here, so.
Let's just say that Louise and I will look at the calendar in depth tomorrow and pick dates.
And then we'll look at the weather and
And then we'll, and I'm going to go like this.
Farmer's Almond.
And find out when the first snow is going to come.
It's going to come on the day that you pick, so pick a late date.
Okay, very good. Are there any, thanks for doing that, so we can get the dates. And are there any announcements? Is there any objection to?
Finances.
Finance.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Okay, I kind of marked that we did it.
Kind of, sort of, but we did do the report. I need to get some values or information from Terry Gertz, so that we can work on our budget. Steve Cool is on notice that will be working on that. And I have a preliminary worksheet that we need to circulate internally for all of you to look at your departments and see where we can make some adjustments. We are thirty-five about, but the hotel money that we projected has to be taken out, and we have to rebalance the budget. So I'd hate for us to be rebalancing the budget at the next meeting, if we can do that via email and then release our emails and arrive at the next meeting with, with just tentative discussion of areas.
But we're, this is the current budget, right? That we started July first?
Mm-hmm.
So, and Terry Gertz, it is?
I just want to make sure that Terry Gertz is either at the amount, stepping into the same amount as Stan Laverman's, or if he's going to be increasing, then we need to make adjustments on the rental permits and go back and say, we have experienced an increase, and pass that to the appropriate permit holders.
And if he needs a helper, too?
Well, whatever those costs are, that's why we need to come up with a, now that we know what his fees are, now that we know how many permits we have and are likely to have, we have a, we have more factors to come up with a better method, do a
I think he needs a couple of months of knowing what he's doing and doing the work, so we actually have figures.
And just remember that he's replacing Stan, who was at seven hundred, seven fifty per month, so, I mean, there is money there. But can I ask Lori a question? Will we be paying Terry two checks, one for building inspections and one for rental inspections, or is it going to just be one check?
If he's going to be put on payroll, then it'll be one check.
Okay, because like, he's on the payroll for this month for, that's probably, I don't know if that's building and rental, or just building?
Oh, I don't just know anything about him doing rental.
Okay.
I think we kind of have to divide it, don't you, Sylvia?
That's, I think we need to get it segregated.
Even if it's the same amount, we have to
Yeah, I think it would be good to say, this is building inspections, this is rental inspections.
I think that would
So anyhow, that's coming, and I just wanted to put you all on quick notice.
So it's coming.
What?
Totally, we're going to talk about it.
Yeah, we're going to talk about it, yeah, because we need to leave, we need to figure out what we're going to do. There's been a, I've reached out to other cities and to our trade association, and it's a big change to the budget. And it should be amended to reflect what we're actually working with. So I'm not going to argue with that.
We probably need to be part of IPers, too, then.
Well, I just found out, yeah, we'll work on that. I don't know, was Stan Laverman, no, Stan Laverman was an independent contractor.
We argued with IPers that he was an independent contractor.
Well, I don't think
What I thought, Lori, what I thought about that is, he's interim.
Interim and is independent, or what?
He is independent right now.
So there's no IPers.
So I thought, six months down the road, we'd look at that.
Okay.
Because we're also supposed to be posting and making this an upwind competitive position as well.
Right, so I thought, we just keep it at forty-five dollars an hour in the interim.
Thought it was forty. Thought it was forty. I have forty in my notes.
I believe forty-five is in the report.
It was the same as the building.
The minutes say forty-five.
Forty, okay, forty-five, forty-five.
Okay.
It's possible that he's not allowed to opt out, and he's a permanent, I mean, even if you, yeah, more or less.
I do, and thanks for reminding me, yeah, we can't just say either is or isn't covered by IPers, and we did have to go to the mat with them.
I don't know what you're talking about. It'd be nice to have a summary of what the issue is, so that we, this council at least has an understanding.
Well, right now, he's going to be paid hourly. He, if he becomes permanent, he would like to have it looked at if he can be, not independent, but be on staff and be part of the IPers program. And his salary would be adjusted, it'd be the same, but he knows that the overall would be lower, that he receives, so that he doesn't have to do taxes independently at other cities. He doesn't have to do that. It's just, you know, that's what
Like, council people, elected officials can opt out if they choose to, but, I mean, even Harold works, you know, nominating one city a year, and he has to pay into IPers, even though he gets right back out of there.
Okay, thanks, Lori.
All right, so that's it.
Okay.
There's the road report, nineteen forty.
Okay.
The street financial report.
We already did it.
We did that.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we did it earlier. And it was all ayes. We did it when Josiah was here. Okay. Come on, clerk. Are there any announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.